Thank you, Mayor Newman, and thank you to members of the city council. We are here for the second workshop out of two. Council will recall, we were just back here in these chambers on May 20th of last month. I want to share just kind of where we've been. This is not your typical PowerPoint deck. We're going to do a live fly through of the model, which Nick will lead us through. But to refresh the, we can go to, sorry, I got it right here, Nick, thank you. Just want to refresh the council's memory on kind of where we've been with this project. Granted, there was the original Jungleland concept dating back to 1987, but in terms of the more recent efforts, starting in 2018 with Raimi and Associates, we had the Downtown Core master plan in 2018. We refined that with ACOM in 2020, and we hired RRM in the spring of 2023 to refine the concept yet again. We flushed that concept out further in 2024, and in this most recent effort, we've taken that just a step further here in 2025. It has been a journey. This project has evolved over the years for the better, and we want to share with you all that hard work and effort, what it's led to. The community engagement has been ongoing as well at each stage, and we put these pictures here to kind of show, tracking along with those different iterations of the project, you have had ongoing community engagement throughout the project, dating back to 2018. And I'm sure if we had even more of a trove of photos, we could dive back even further. These are just four snapshots in time, but what I've realized after sharing some of the very detailed visuals on the city's website this past week, we've gotten a couple of questions about whether we're going to still continue to see public input after this evening and into the future. The short answer is yes, we will need additional community input, primarily as we start to design those public spaces in the post entitlement portion of the project. We're still a year away from that, but rest assured, as we get beyond the 30% mark, we're going to need to reengage the public and continue this conversation. Last month, we shared five key changes from the 2024 design. This is the 2024 design that's shown on screen. Between that design and the one that we showed you on May 20th, to rehash those quickly, number one there was the conversion of the proposed City Hall location to a hospitality use. Second is the targeted reconstruction of the east wing of City Hall. Third is the relocation of the public market, actually bringing it inside closer to where the red number two is shown on screen. Fourth is the introduction of a town square, now that we've removed the public market from that area, and then the introduction of a restaurant up against Teal Boulevard, where the number four is shown. And then fifth are those two jogging lines on your screen, is the realignment of the underground stormwater box culvert to help make better use of our landmass there. We also shared some diagrams. I won't go into detail here, but just to illustrate and remind the council that we walked floor by floor of what the different uses on each floor of the program might be. And then we finished with this diagram here. This is the updated 2025 site plan that we'll be speaking from tonight, and Nick will be showing you around. One thing I wanted to touch on, you're going to see this as Nick and team are flying through the models, the architectural style. Something that was, I'll say, somewhat elusive for us in going through this entire process was, what is the architectural style of Thousand Oaks, or what should it be for this downtown program? And not that we needed to define it outright, but we wanted to take cues from the community on what that looked like and what it can be. So these were some of the criteria that we were given from the community engagement sessions. First was a strong and seamless connection between the indoors and outdoors. The use of durable and natural stone materials, things you didn't have to transport and import across the country or across the world. Generous use of glass to create transparency where possible and showcase a natural landscape. Timeless architectural style that will stay relevant, something that wasn't just going to be a fad here today, gone tomorrow. And then lastly, if it had a connection to the Thousand Oaks region, all the better. And we showed some of these examples, and you're going to see these in more detail. The two photos up above are real life examples of this Southern California regional modernism, and that's a mouthful, but for most of us, we kind of understand this architectural style as mid-century modern. The two renderings down below, you're going to see in more detail as we go about the discussion tonight. But these have, this was the architectural style that really embodied all five of these characteristics that the community had set out for us and what they wanted to see in their downtown. So with that, we're going to launch the model as I'm introducing the team here. Nick is going to queue up the model in real time. Nick Deitch, to my right, will be leading the model. He'll be flying around. John Tran, a member of the Smith Group team, he will be covering the hotel piece of this. Tony Tomassello on Nick's Juice, he is here in person with Brian Hannigan, who'll be covering the park areas and restaurant. Chris Anderson and Dennis Park will be joining us via Zoom. So with that, I will hand the mic to Nick. Nick, take it away.
Thank you, Akbar. Technology is constantly evolving, and this is an example of that. This is the first time that I've ever done a live fly-through in a public hearing of a three-dimensional model of a place that is conceived in our minds and hearts and yet to be made real. It's been an extraordinary experience, I think, for our team. It's been a really collaborative process. We've been in a number of community workshops with, I think, a vast representation of the community. We've had a lot of great dialogue about what this wants to be. This is, okay, I'll try to eat it, I guess. Thanks, sorry. The, I think at the heart of our process and our question is, you know, what does a downtown Thousand Oaks look like? And I think it was very clear that the community did not want a generic thing that could be made anywhere, that could be dropped onto any city. And the site offers some really unique cues in that regard. Of course, the existing civic center, which is a very unique building, and some people, you know, love it, and some people aren't so sure, but it's here, and frankly, as I've pointed out a number of times, it's kind of amazing. I don't know of any other city hall civic building that has two theaters in it and is located amidst oak trees. And those things combined actually have fueled a lot of our process. One of the, at the heart of this place is what I've been referring to as the town square that isn't square. And that town square is really designed around the presence of the oak trees and the desire to preserve and honor those oak trees. And so we've allowed that to inform a lot of the physicality of this place and the form of the place. What you're seeing here, and I'm going to be moving around a lot, so just fasten your seatbelt, because that's just what I do when I'm running through these things. You see the existing civic center here. You see an addition, a significant addition modification to the existing city center, which will be the new City Hall facility. You see Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and we're representing an enhancement of it to be further studied and refined. You see what we're calling the Pavilion Restaurant. This is a sort of pseudo civic building. It's a restaurant, but it has a terrace on the top of it that overlooks the public space of the town square. You see a long Thousand Oaks Boulevard, mixed-use residential with shops on the ground floor. You see where we originally had intended to put a new city hall, and as Akbar explained, we've sort of repositioned things to instead really reinvigorate the existing building in some substantial ways, and then thereby freeing up that site, and this is Dallas Drive, by the way, freeing up that site to provide a new hotel. And then beyond that, some additional mixed use. You can see the existing parking structure here in the back, 750 cars in that building. And then underneath this building on the far west has an additional couple of hundred cars parking in a three-level podium. Let me just go ahead and take you down briefly, and then we're going to do something a little different. I'm not going to talk at you for 10 minutes. We're going to encounter the members of our design team at different pieces of this, and they'll engage with us, assuming that the remote connections work, and talk a little bit about each of those pieces. But let's go on down into our town center here. So you can see on one side, the restaurant pavilion, which Akbar described as mid-century modern-inspired, it's very transparent. We have a terrace that's slightly higher. There's a lot of elevation to this site. There's a lot of grade and grade change, and it's not readily apparent, but it's there when you get into the design of the thing. You can see that oak trees are a very important piece of this. We are treating the oak trees with a great deal of care, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move through this. We are creating places for people to gather and use these spaces in a number of ways, and we'll get into more detail about that, too, as we move along. One of the key features that really has been in this plan since, I think even before the pandemic, was the idea of a grand stair. There is no connection right now from the terrace at Kavli Theater down to this space out front. And frankly, at the moment, there's not really a strong reason that there would have been one, because there wasn't a lot going on down here unless you wanted to sit under an oak tree, which is lovely, but doesn't really require a grand connection. We are now including a grand connection between the Kavli and the new plaza, including an elevator that is highly visible and readily accessible. I'm going to tool on down what we call Main Street. This street, in our original design, this was what I referred to as car tolerant. You probably remember that phrase. We heard in the workshops that there was really a strong desire to not have cars intrude into this space. And so we made the design call to not provide a passable car street here. It is drivable, and it can be serviced, you know, with service vehicles and with emergency vehicles, but not day-to-day traffic. But we're still, nevertheless, we refer to it as Main Street, and it does connect to a significant turnaround and an entry point at Dallas Drive. Let me head on down here. Here you can see a sampling of how Farmer's Market would be set up in the space. And we've designed the whole plaza so that this could encompass the entire site of this public plaza area, depending upon the size and nature of the event. You can see that the mixed-use buildings have a commercial at the ground floor, a residential, apartments above. As we come around the corner here, we're passing the, this is the current entrance to the Sheer Forum. Many of us, you know, park in that parking lot down here. This is currently where Dallas Drive would punch right through the site where our hotel is landing. I'm going to step over to the side here, and I'm going to pause and see if John Tran is available. He is one of our architect designers from the Smith Group. John, are you online?
I am, Nick.
Awesome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, John Tran, I'm an architect with Smith Group located in Phoenix, Arizona. Delighted to be here tonight to share with you all our stories about the project. Akbar and Nick, I've already spoken about some of the goals of the project in general. I'm here to speak with you specifically about some of the goals for the hotel project. And so certainly, you know, the hotel, our project is going to introduce a vibrant new community use and a destination that doesn't exist right now on the campus. It's going to bring more foot traffic, it's going to bring more energy, it's going to bring more experiences to the heart of our new civic center here. It's going to be an economic driver, right? So the project is positioned to attract developers and operators. It's going to establish presumably a new revenue stream for the city, for visitors and locals alike who are going to use this hotel. Towards that end, one of the things that we have worked very diligently to make sure that while the design does convey a point of view about the quality of design that all of the buildings are going to have, we wanted to make sure that it was flexible and adaptable and partner-ready for any development partner and hotel operator. So as such, you know, we, again, tried to be very, very strategic with the sorts of things that we are conveying, while still maintaining that sense of place with the rest of the projects. You know, contextually, one of the things that we know that we want to do is the hotel will want to be a piece of the rest of the development, the mixed-use development, in terms of scale, materiality, and sort of vibe. So as such, it's a, and then also, it wants to make sure that the scale of the building adheres and is appropriate to observe the height of the Kavli Theater, which is still sort of the show on the hill. So just the facts, and as Nick's flying you around here, this is the hotel drop-off. Large lobby, one of the things that we want to make sure that the hotel does. It is anchoring the corner of Dallas, with Dallas and the new Main Street. So large new presence, architectural landmark at that intersection, previously the main intersection, but now one of the few, you know, few prominent entries into our project. Just the facts, six-story building, once again, in kind with the other mixed-use buildings, still lower than the Kavli Theater. Six stories, as I said, 147 rooms, fantastic amenities, including banquet halls, a great pool deck. And then one of the things, key features in this hotel is this roof deck, this sort of large terrace on the roof that is for the community as well as for visitors and guests at the hotel. So you can imagine sunset, sunrise on this great hotel deck with views of the mountains to the east of us, and really looking down to the entire project. You know, so lastly, I think most importantly, this project is going to, above all bees, embody the values of the rest of the project here, and prioritizing inclusion, accessibility, sustainability, connection with nature, integration with art, and hopefully become one of the pieces of the new brand of downtown Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, John. I want to point out that the drop-off, the turnaround here is intended, yes, to serve the hotel, but even more importantly, I think, it's really intended to provide, we're trying to provide people with options as to how to arrive here. That you can arrive at Teal Boulevard, we have new diagonal parking at the street, we have bus stops out there, we have bike service through the project, we have the parking structure, of course, behind the hotel, 750 cars, we have some new parking under some of the mixed use. But this is a drop-off that's at the heart of the project, and people will be able to take Uber or someday, maybe Waymo. I know that's an interesting idea that's coming, but I'll tell you what, I got to try it in Phoenix, and it was amazing. But the idea is that there's a high level of accessibility here, that people can get to the heart of the project without having to necessarily go find a parking space. So something to consider. Let's talk about the mixed use, and I think Tony Tomassello is going to speak to this.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tony Tomassello, I'm with RRM Design Group. I am not an architect, but I have the privilege of being our project manager for our consultant team on this, and the honor of representing so many of our amazingly talented folks who've had a hand in bringing this to life thus far, and really excited about to continue our momentum in this project moving forward. The mixed-use buildings, if you can maybe peel out, Nick, and we can take kind of a look at the west side of the property a little bit more holistically. The west side of the property involves the construction of a variety of mixed-use structures, so ground-floor retail with residential apartments above. There's a key, a few key goals that are involved in the design and planning of this use and this component of the project. First and foremost, authenticity and placemaking is something that we heard over and over again through the community outreach and through our own sort of exploration of this space. And what that involves is the creation of exemplary mixed-use structures, from design, massing, articulation, to establish that context for the future redevelopment along the Boulevard, and really setting the bar so that others can emulate. Included in that is the creation of a place, a sense of arrival, a sense of destination that you have arrived to downtown. It's different from the surrounding areas. However, there's a sort of context to that, a building up to the center. And then similar themes in terms of the architectural language and relationship of the public and private spaces within this downtown core. Another key focus is the pedestrian-oriented spaces. We've taken great care to try to interject and pull back in special places to create these moments that are for the public, that provide some strong visual connections to, visual and physical connections to Thousand Oaks Boulevard and to Main Street, and really making those connections strong and permeable. And then the interaction and integration of Building C with the plaza, which is sort of along the eastern side adjacent to the hotel. Another fundamental component of this is the consolidation and screening of parking areas within this program to create that park-once environment. As you're looking here at the Thousand Oaks Boulevard frontage, what you're not seeing is, under those buildings that front Thousand Oaks Boulevard, is a subterranean parking structure. That was afforded to us, that opportunity, by the decision to relocate the stormwater culvert, and really make those buildings and those uses along Thousand Oaks Boulevard that much more accessible and viable from an economic and usability standpoint. And then lastly, the ground floor, again, coming back to the idea of needing to ensure that the commercial uses that inhabit these structures are representative of Thousand Oaks, so that we've designed these spaces and planned for them to be flexible and adaptable, that they're aligned with sort of our goals for those commercial spaces as, you know, to be able to support more local and small businesses, not giant big box, but really kind of embrace that uniqueness of what this downtown can and should be. And with that, I'm going to turn it back to Nick, and I'm happy to answer any questions that may come up. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Let's, we have a new arrival, a new path of arrival to the large parking structure. We're calling this at this time, this is called West Road. It's on the west edge of the city's property. And what you're seeing here beyond that, this road, is a private developer's potential response as a part of the effort to catalyze change in this downtown area. And, you know, part of the strategy here is that this will become a nucleus of a larger core downtown area. So the West Road will bring us to the, it has a three-level parking structure underneath what we're calling Building A, this mixed-use building here, and then to a new service road access to the parking structure and to the Kavli drop-off, and also to the service court of the Sheer Forum, which currently you walk past, if you're coming into the entrance of City Hall, you walk right past a service court. That won't happen anymore. That will be now completely camouflaged. We've also made a lot of effort to create some permeability on the site. So there are ways to get from the parking, from the cars, down to different places within the property, not any single one route that is required for you to move around through the site. So the Kavli turnaround, which most of us, and here's the backside of the hotel, let me go ahead and just show you briefly, there's a, this is John's rubber duck, and the pool terrace. And also on the ground floor of the hotel is a small conferencing facility with a small patio off of this side court area. So the hotel will have some meeting facilities, but we also anticipate the opportunity for some synchronicity between the hotel and the existing civic center and meeting spaces, and using the theaters, for example, for keynote speakers for small conferences and things of that nature. But let's go to the Kavli turnaround, and as many of you are probably aware, this is a little bit of a notorious location within the current civic center, because what happens is a lot of people come out of the parking structure, and they're not exactly sure where to go if they're looking for services. It's a little bit of a maze. And so we are trying very hard in the, intrinsically in the design, to take away the guesswork, that it becomes very clear where you're going, what you're looking for is easy to find. So as we come through this interesting kind of collision between the two buildings that was part of the original design, we come out onto a renewed and revised Kavli terrace, and it's significantly different than the existing. And we've got, Chris Anderson on the team is going to speak a little bit to our City Hall design annex that's a part of the existing civic center. Chris, are you there?
Yes, great. Could you, we have our cameras on. Are you able to see us or no?
No, we're just seeing, we're just seeing the beautiful design, Chris.
Oh, great. I'm going to turn off the bulb here so I can see more of your screen. Thank you, everyone. Pleasure to present the City Hall component to this wonderful downtown. As Nick had mentioned, you know, one great thing about this relocation, or two things. So we have this sort of, some silver lining here, it's a relocation to City Hall. One is that people coming from the garage are already going to be very familiar how to get to their city services, right? They're going to go through that little elbow that Nick had just highlighted before, but there's going to be no re-edification here. So it's going to be a familiarity that we can take advantage of. Two is that, one of the really interesting aspects that makes the current City Hall civic functions and theater functions unique is that there is this unusual synergy between sort of the arts and governance. And keeping these paired together, I think, just dials up that uniqueness to Thousand Oaks. So having them in the same general area, I think, is a wonderful asset. You may notice that the terrace is, looks expansive, right? It's not so much that the terrace has grown, it's really that we've really worked hard to sort of level it out. It used to have stairs and ramps, all these things that are sort of interrupting flow and circulation. So what we did is we kind of worked hard to make it all for the most part one main level. So now it's super flexible, it could host a variety of different events, evening events, day events, small, large, and it's that flexibility that we think is going to be the greatest asset, make this completely usable for the long term. And then, Nick, maybe if you go down to sort of the entry point again, I want to just highlight the main driver, one of the main drivers is just so that ease of circulation, recognition where to go. So right when you come into this terrace, we kind of organized the architecture and signage to really lead you in, like, this is where I want to go. So if you look to the left, yeah, you can see that grand stair, but if you're trying to get to the service hub, you could look to the right, and you could see the signage, you can see the front door, and you kind of know where to go. In this case, we've got to walk through some tables, but in your general day-to-day use, you'll have sort of a clear path that gets you here. When you go through these doors, this is going to be the lobby of the service hub, right? So you could conduct your business looking that way. If you by chance want to get to the council chambers, then you come down this sort of public corridor that takes you down to, here you can see the skylight, Dennis is going to talk about how that lets light and really creates a wonderful environment down in the food hall and the arts area. And here you can see we're arriving at, in some ways, I guess, I consider really kind of the crown jewel of this building. It's the council chambers, and, you know, what we love about this space is that it really kind of represents all the aspirations, we think, we heard from all of you, which is transparency, connection to the community. I mean, you literally can look down and you're connected to this park visually, and they're in turn connected to you. So it's going to become this sort of wonderful element or beacon that kind of represents access for everyone to this building. And then I'll talk, you know, briefly about the architecture and the skin, because I know you guys have heard a lot of talk today, so I'll be brief. But one thing to note is that what makes the skin and makes this building, I think, very appealing is that it's highly functional. So all these louvers, these elements that you see in the building are designed for the purpose. What they're really doing is shading the building so it doesn't overheat, and they're cutting out glares, so that from the occupants on the inside looking out are going to be very comfortable. So architecture creates these kind of wonderful depths and shadows, but functionally, it actually performs, helps the building perform. So this is sort of this big element that kind of comes up and around, and that kind of leads you back into the Kavli. And I think, you know, one of the things that we really like about this architectural expression is that it's light, it's permeable, it's glassy, and that is kind of a nice juxtaposition to what you have existing, and yet they still feel compatible to me. So can't wait for this to kick off. And, you know, another nice thing is that you were able to maintain this all-important connection down to the bridge, which we're going through now. So you'll have restrooms to the right, and here you are to the existing bridge, which is going to take you down to the amphitheater zone. Nick, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Chris. So this little alcove on the site is kind of a special place, and it is sort of separated from other things. And as the team went into the analysis of the different uses, working with city staff, and particularly the cultural arts staff, it became kind of clear that this really wanted to be an amphitheater. And it's an intimate amphitheater, it's not the size of something like the Hollywood Bowl. amphitheater. It's not the size of something like the Hollywood Bowl. This is probably a 250 to 300-person capacity, depending on what's happening. We set it up so that banquets could happen in the evenings. It could be, things could be, you know, anywhere from rock shows to folk shows to weddings to civic activities, chamber events, but it has the potential to be very intimate, but it also has the potential to accommodate larger crowds. There's turf, so you could set up blankets and picnics, and it's really a very versatile space in that regard. And as I said, I think it's kind of separated from other things, but still very accessible, very easy to get to. Accessibility, by the way, was a very important concern expressed by many of the community members, and we really appreciated that people did come out and share earnestly with us some of their challenges with family members who needed that accessibility. And so, we were very careful to try to design into the whole site opportunities for servicing people who need particular care. So, I want to have Dennis talk to us about the public market. And as Akbar mentioned in our original conceptuals, it was out here somewhere in this space, and as we got into the, to retooling the existing building, it became clear that there was an opportunity to do something more than just a public market slash food court slash whatever that might be. And what we've actually ended up doing is bringing the arts and kind of an arc incubator space together with what we anticipate being a kind of a craft food, and, you know, the idea that there wouldn't, how do we put it, there would be no chilies here. There would be no Cinnabon. So, Dennis, are you there? Do you want to talk to us a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Mayor, council members, my name is Dennis Park. I'm an architect with Smith Group. And like Nick was just mentioning, really, really excited about this portion of the project, which is going to be really an anchor, a tenant for the building. And like Nick had mentioned, we always envisioned it beyond just a food hall or a food court, something unique to Thousand Oaks. And as we met with community members, you know, we kept on hearing about the desire for art to be infused in every element of this program. And just like John had mentioned, the hotel, and Chris had mentioned, you know, art being infused even in this element. So, instead of a food hall, you know, whether we call it a culinary collective or whatnot, this idea of infusing art as a main element to keep this area vibrant throughout the day and throughout the night. Architecturally speaking, you can see that it's a really dynamic space. We've created these large two-story volumes, especially that large skylight that Chris had mentioned, and you could actually peer through it here, and you could actually see those flags waving, and the City Hall building. So, you're kind of always connected. You kind of understand where you're at. And again, creating this dynamic two-story volume gives us the opportunity for that art incubator to live on that second floor. Again, we heard from community members that maybe it shouldn't necessarily just be another space. Maybe it can all be one space in itself. So, you can imagine, people as they're dining, eating, getting their burrito tacos, they're seeing artists going back and forth, working, or they're coming down to partake in the food hall. And so, again, this is just a really exciting, dynamic space, and this infusion of something specific to Thousand Oaks, again, is not trying to be a generic food hall, something specific to Thousand Oaks. Architecturally speaking, the massing or the shape kind of looks familiar, but what we really try to do is really lean into transparency, lean into this ability to be able to see through day and night, connect back to the oak trees. And again, a lot of the shapes of the buildings have to do with trying to preserve those oak trees. Stopping here, which is a critical, important thing, what Nick had brought up too, was that great connection that we're highlighting back up to the terrace and back to the parking structure. So, we heard about wayfinding, that we really want to make sure that with this effort, that it's very clear how to get to different places. So, you can imagine, as you walk out of that parking structure, you walk straight past this, and then you can kind of make your way down these grand stairs. And just adjacent to it is that clear glass elevator. We're not bearing the elevator. We're pulling it out front to make sure, you know, we're really leaning again into that idea of accessibility. And as Nick is panning over, this is the existing building, and I know you're very familiar that these are all currently office spaces, and with adaptive reuse, we're giving second life to a lot of these spaces with cafes, a library depot, and really excited to share a new performing arts venue. So, the idea here is that you're going to have cultural programming now on three levels. Cavalier on three, Share on two, and then this great space, which would be on level one, at the community, really the community level. Here, you're seeing it set up as maybe a comedy club, but we imagine that this space can be so flexible that it can be hold children's book reading, all the way to kids rehearsing for a play, to lectures, and even in the evening hours being that comedy theater. And if you kind of push your way through here, that, again, it's all kind of contiguous, the food, the art, the theater, you know, that it's all kind of a blended space, and it's, most importantly, adjacent and really connected to that dynamic park. And so, with that, I'll hand it back to Nick.
Thank you, Dennis. And so, from here, you can see the other side of that pavilion restaurant and the terrace. We'll go visit that in a moment. And of course, this is the town square that isn't square, and Brian Hanigan is going to speak to us a little bit about the landscape design and the basic ideas behind the spaces.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Brian Hanigan, RRM Design Group with the site team. So, the best part about this whole town square that isn't square, as Nick puts it, is the massive existing oak trees, and they really give the presence of space to the town square. We designed around it. As Nick mentioned earlier, there's quite a lot of elevation change here and there, so we've tucked all that into the site. Some of the images that you see here with the climbing structure and kind of play structure areas are just concepts that we're looking for to imagine places where kids and families could hang out and play and have, you know, a day in the park while maybe there's a concert going on under the oak trees. We show some shade structure art elements, and then the plaza space here, we show some water features in the pavement, and maybe some art in the pavement as part of pulling that into the town square. This could serve as a gathering place for farmer's market, could be tied all into the space. This is the restaurant that Nick was showing earlier, looking into the space, so you can see activity in there. And with all the residential that's going in and the accessibility from all sides, this is going to be like a day and nighttime use space. As we meander through the pathway here, you can kind of see the farmer's market opportunities there, and they can wrap those tents all the way around for larger events. If we pan to the right, we see the frontage to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so it has a really good presence on the street. And then, as we get back into the town square, we end up back close to, we wrap back into Main Street. And as Nick was saying earlier, Main Street is kind of the spine that ties the whole site from one end to the other. This half of it will be pedestrian only, and so you can kind of see the path going through along the front of the buildings. That pan to the left and across is, and back now, we're going toward the street. So, this is Main Street for the pedestrians, the hotels to the left, that's the roundabout for the drop-off, and that's all pedestrian space, shared with the cars, but mostly pedestrian. So, this level here too, we designed it so it's all one level. It's raised so that it has that plaza feel to it. If you were walking, you would just walk across from the sidewalk across the street and into the plaza. And then, our street that comes in, this part of Main Street, which has vehicles on it, we have a slight curve in it, and this offers a really interesting feel to the street. You can kind of see a meander in it. It does great for just the visibility of looking down and seeing more trees, and it creates a little bit of curiosity. There's the pedestrian crossing and the view through the two buildings. And we have nice wide sidewalks here, we're about 17 feet, so they're very wide walkable sidewalks and storefrontages. And then, as we conclude, we can look back, there's the meander, you can kind of see the meander in the street. And then, as we pan up, we're in the residential areas above, looking down. And that's it. Back to you, Nick.
So, I think at this point, we've, we're kind of concluding the tour unless somebody's got something they thought we missed from the team. If there's anything that you want to point out, we can certainly talk about it. I do, there is an important component in this that we haven't gotten into, and that has to do with affordable housing. And I expect Akbar will talk a little bit more about that. But one of the, I think one of the points that I am passionate about making is that the way we have been developing our communities is that we put certain types of housing into certain areas and other types of housing in other areas, and that tends to be not only a type separation, but an affluency separation. So, you get communities where there's a lot of very expensive houses and communities where there's more, you know, lesser expensive houses and lesser expensive apartments. In a project like this, the inclusionary housing, which the city has embraced, and it is a requirement, but in this particular project, it will actually be throttled up. That inclusionary housing means that people of many economic stratas will be living together in a building, under a roof, sharing, for example, a terrace that overlooks the town square. And it might be that someone who lives here and works in the, a coffee place in the food court or in one of the little cafes, who maybe made your sandwich that afternoon, is also a resident, and you might actually have a glass of wine with them in the evening and watch the sunset. We don't have that kind of opportunity in our communities right now. That's just not a very common occurrence. But every one of these mixed-use buildings has that common terrace. This terrace is open to everyone who lives in the building. And I just find it extraordinary that we have the opportunity to create that kind of inclusivity into these projects. And this is happening, this isn't just a Thousand Oaks phenomenon. This is now happening as a part of our statewide response to the housing crisis and infill development of this type.
So, with that, we just have a handful of slides to wrap up, and then we'll get into questions of the council, or from the council. So, Nick, if you want to queue up our PowerPoint deck one more time for us? Perfect. Thank you, Nick. Council may recall, at the May 20th, excuse me, at the May 20th city council meeting, we discussed a variety of different funding mechanisms, and one of which was tax increment financing. This financing mechanism works similarly to the former redevelopment agencies. It would require the voluntary participation of our fellow taxing entities that also receive a portion of our property tax. This recommendation number two essentially authorizes your city manager to begin those discussions with our fellow taxing entities. If there are more questions on this, our finance director, Jamie Boscarino, can handle those. With regards to the general plan and specific plan amendments, recommendation number three, direct staff to return with initiation of those specific plan and general plan amendments. That's primarily to change the land use designation of the portions of the city-owned property from institutional to mixed-use. We'd return on July 8th, just with the initiation. Justine Kendall can answer more questions on that if you have questions. And then lastly, recommendation number four refers to the Surplus Lands Act. This would be directing staff to return with additional declaration of surplus lands. For background, council may recall that nearly a year ago, you authorized staff to declare the portion in blue as public surplus. The city went through the notification process. We had no formal interests received, and that area is now available. At the time, we thought we were going to retain the area in yellow on the right for institutional uses. Essentially, where the hotel is, it was where the City Hall was planned to go initially. However, now that the program has been updated, we'll be coming back on July 8th, potentially asking the city council for authorization to advertise a notice for those additional areas. There's one correction in the staff report I did want to point out. Building D, which is that restaurant that Nick showed, we had mentioned that it fits under the SLA exemption. We're seeking clarification from our outside council if that is indeed the case. We'll be sure to make note of that when we come back for the official authorization of whether that falls under the exemption or not. So, with that, I'll just summarize our five recommendations for you tonight. Number one, first and foremost, provide feedback on what Nick and team shared with you tonight. And then, two through four is what I just mentioned. Authorize your city manager to begin discussions regarding tax increment financing. Initiate the specific plan, general plan amendments, and then return to city council with the additional declarations of surplus lands, and also that this action is exempt from CEQA. So, with that, we will take any questions from the council. Thank you.